Meeting to order. Uh, welcome our visitors Tammy and for a few minutes Stephanie and also Shannon. And on Zoom watching our meeting. Uh, we meet the third Thursday of every month at 6:30 at the City Hall. So come join in all of our fun. Our mission statement is the purpose of the organization shall be charitable and educational to promote the Keep Texas Beautiful program of litter prevention, beautification, and community improvement to minimize the impact of solid waste in the West Lockeney Water Service area and to empower individuals to take responsibility in these areas. And it's time for citizens input. Does anybody have anything they want to say in the audience there? Does anyone here, excuse me, have any announcements they'd like to make? Right, right?
I got nothing.
Hey, there's gonna be a hibachi truck at Cal Camp tomorrow night.
Thank you Shannon for sharing that.
Yeah, Shannon.
Hibachi go.
Hibachi go from four to eight. So what all kinds of food are they going to have?
Yeah, uh, yes.
I saw some rice. I saw some rice in the picture. I love it and such.
Um, I can pull up her menu if you like.
That's okay.
And it's to go.
No trick question.
Hey, go. It's to go.
To go.
But it's the name.
Yeah.
Hibachi to go.
Okay, number six on our agenda is to discuss the interest in attending the DFW regional training on September 10th in Arlington as we must register now. Um, however, this is the same day as the Travers Yard of the Year. We've got two conflicting dates here. So, uh, we can certainly pass on this, uh, in order to, because I don't know that we'd be back in time because it's till four o'clock. It's like an all-day thing and it Arlington's quite a drive.
What is the topic again at the Arlington?
It's everything. It's a, they cover everything.
From Keep Texas Beautiful, it's their, they're the.
Yeah, and Arlington is the host. So they do lots of things up there.
Well, Lorraine and I talked about going. If you would like somebody to go to, to at least pass on information. But if you'd rather us be here for the presentation for Travers, uh, Yard of the Year, you can stay.
Oh, dude, okay. Do what?
He's gonna be out at down four the 10th. He's like the Monday and half, wait, down after the 8th, he's gonna be in the 9th, 11th. He's gonna be gone three days before he has found himself.
Okay.
So, that's just possible. He's on a second committee.
So, the idea was to do it on Calvin's birthday?
And he's gonna be on four. And he said he would drive the 18th count back then. Eight, seven or eight or.
No, that's fine. Okay, so, uh, the good thing about the September 10th training over in Arlington is it counts towards our, um, many hours of, um, the, um, one-hour sessions they do every Wednesday or most of the time Wednesdays at noon that I can never attend. Uh, but anyway, that, that would be great if y'all can go. Or I would like to go myself too, um, to go over there and see what all that they have to offer. They always have a lot of freebies that they give away. Uh, they always serve breakfast and lunch and drinks, you know, throughout the day. And, uh, most of the time they take you on a tour of Arlington, show you some of their projects they've completed and stuff like that. It's a very good training. Um, so what day would you prefer for Calvin's birthday?
Um, it just depends on the weekend, the weekend of, you know, the company did it. So, um, let's just go ahead and say the 7th.
That's a Sunday. So, in the afternoon?
In the afternoon.
Okay, so let's change on, uh, the item, uh, is further down in the agenda here. Uh, Calvin Travers Yard of the Year, September 10th. So we're gonna skip down to number 19 and we're gonna change that to September 7th. You already have that. Thank you, Kim. That's great. Okay, so we want to go back and discuss the Arlington thing? Or y'all think y'all would like to go? Because I would like to go too.
Okay.
Dwayne can manage our business. Uh, and September the 10th, of course, is a Wednesday. So, um, I'll have to bow out from the food bank that day and.
What time, what time does it start?
Um, I gave y'all last month the agenda.
I was out.
And let's see.
9:30 to 4.
9:30 to 4, okay. And we have to leave early. Number 30.
It's an all-day thing.
9:30 to 4.
Yeah, it's an all-day, all-day training. But it's fun. It's fun training.
It is fun, yeah. You would enjoy it.
It's not like work. Let's, let's plan on, on several of us going to that. We'll go in one car and, you know, that'll be fun. Okay, we want to now go to number seven and I want to first of all apologize that your copies of Stephanie's application got coffee spilled all over it. So when you look at Stephanie's application, see the nice coffee stain?
That is not a rain cloud.
No, this is the coffee stain Stephanie out of my bag. So I do apologize for that, but we're going to go on you.
It's like a big cloud.
It does. Yeah, anyway.
We're keeping West Lockeney beautiful?
Yes, we are. So anyway, uh, we want to approve her application. So the chair will, um, entertain a motion on that.
I make a motion.
Y'all already know her. She's been a great help to us with the tree sale. Tree giveaway, rather.
I make a motion. We accept the application for our new team member Stephanie Barnett.
I second it.
And we have a second over there from little Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. So Stephanie, come on up and join us. We've got your stuff right here and you can see off her, be close to Kim there if you want. Okay, number eight. We're going to be discussing recruiting one other community committee member. So does anybody else have anyone else? Now, I know that, um, the lady that was here and helped out with the cleanup that applied before, she retracted her.
Lisa.
So I didn't know. She kinda acted like the last meeting that she might have wanted to come back.
Uh, no, I don't think so. Is she, okay, so Lisa appears to be a very outgoing person, but she's very much an introvert. And I think just, I don't think she's ready for this.
So maybe just being a volunteer.
Yeah, I think she enjoys participating. Yeah, she likes to participate, but I think she feels a little uncomfortable. And I don't think she wants to make a commitment to, to doing it. She's working. She has a kid and like all of this, but.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else have any suggestions?
Try and get my kid to do it.
Oh.
I'm working on it.
Make it happen Stephanie.
You talked about it.
Well, not about this, but.
But no, you, you see her. You talk.
You want me to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I went and took the water to your house. It was in perfect time. I did not know. I wouldn't.
Oh, she's pretty sick.
Yeah, that would be good. We need onions.
Well, she works the six to two, so there's no reason she couldn't, you know, have afternoons to assist and that kind of stuff as well. But I think that, that's perfect. So I think I almost got her in there.
I almost got her. Sounds like we're trapped.
Well, you know, I know it can, it can sound intimidating at first. You're like, oh, I, you know, I don't know if I'd be the right person for that. And, but it's not a hard thing. And we have a lot of fun doing what we do. So we just need to convince her that.
I just thought, yeah, I'll just take her dog on today.
There you go.
And what is your, Becca? Possibly Becca.
What I'll have to do is get some more applications from the City Hall here. Do y'all know where I could find an application for a committee member? Thank you Shannon. Okay, number nine, review and approve the bank statements from July. I'm gonna preface this by saying that American National Bank has changed. And if any of you bank at American National, you know, they were down for like two days. You couldn't get your money out. You couldn't ask them a question. You couldn't go inside.
Yeah, I want them to be greeting.
Pardon me?
Who is greeting?
I know. Somebody's gotta cut.
Coffee and love.
Coffee and love. I'm so sorry. Dwayne, I should've cleaned it up. Anyway, uh, so you've got several pages here. This is the first page, which is page one of two that actually gives us the information on our account, showing our beginning balance.
Oh yeah, it totally looks different.
Yes. And then, uh, of course, we didn't have any expenditures, so there's nothing coming out of it. But as you can see, uh, from these other pages, they totally looks different.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Oh, we earned six cents.
Yeah, yes. Yes.
Rolling in it.
Yeah, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, bank statement.
I'll second.
Just Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you get the vote. Okay, and it's unanimous. Okay. Now we're gonna go back over here and we have to discuss the, uh, approved minutes from the July 17th meeting.
A lot of minutes there. I was.
And Kim does, does a wonderful job. She's such an attention detail person. And so she's got several, uh, pages. I think it's four or three. I don't know. Anyway, uh, of the meeting notes, I've got blood on mine, Dwayne. My goodness.
Hey, it's dry day. I don't have anything.
Two are fine. Everybody, I did.
I did two and I.
Did it hurt?
I fixed it in one line and then I didn't do.
I'm waiting too much. I don't even know I'm doing it.
But anyway, good, uh, go over the minutes if you don't mind. Take a few minutes and go over the minutes from the last meeting, uh, back in July and we will, uh, take a vote on those.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I second.
Minutes, that's fine, alright. And all in favor?
Aye.
So that's unanimous as well. Okay, uh, review and discuss the budget for 25 and 26. We need to add and delete items and. I don't know if you have a copy of it in your stack there or not.
I don't.
The budget, here's that. And, um, it's, um, this is what Mary had, uh, given me. And this is kinda what we had drawn the line through because I think we decided we weren't gonna have garage sales anymore.
I don't think.
When they quit.
Waste of time.
So we drew, we drew lines through that. Uh, yeah, you can if you want to Shannon. Thank you. Thank you. But anyway, so, uh, we, we took that off and we took, um, something else off. I can't remember what it is now, but I drew lines. But we're gonna have to add some more things back in there because we've got to pay for the other sign, second sign. We've already changed the first sign and it's. But anyway, we'll talk about that in a minute. But, um, we.
Keep looking for it. But I'm not, I thought I was leaving my mind.
No, no, you're not. You're not. Um, but we're close. We're real close. We're closer than we were last month. So we're, we're glad about that. But anyway, I've gotta get this, uh, amended budget to Mary tomorrow. And so that's why I hate to pressure y'all, but we gotta, we gotta look through this.
I say you can have copies, but we're gonna separate.
Sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What we do without you.
I don't know.
The wildfire project.
Oh, the wildfire project. Yes, yes. Oh, thank you. Oh, oh, they've changed the way that looks.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that looks nice. Okay, so up here in the top, uh, we've got the garage sale marked out. Uh, we've got the spring garage sale marked out. Um, I'm not sure what this means about the carryover prior year funds. Um, and down in the rest, um, we've got cleanup projects and we've got $500 out here. I, I don't know what that is all about. So I'll have to check with Mary about that stuff. And again, there's another holdover funds, uh, signs. And we had $400 that we spent on signs. And then our West Lockeney sign, we still have to pay for the smaller of the two. Uh, we wanna do away with the wildfire project. That was something Kathy Majors had wanted to do by, um, getting blue bonnet seeds from a, a farm down in East Texas somewhere. And then everybody putting on golf shoes and going around and pushing the seeds down in the ground and.
How do they grow on the side of the road?
They're just, they just grow.
They just grow. But she wanted to go to some places out there that didn't have any and just stomp them in the ground.
No, ain't nobody doing that.
We can't do that. I'm, I'm sorry. It was a good suggestion from Kathy. Uh, yard of the month and community improvement, we're definitely gonna keep that. Yard of the month, of course. Plant sale, fall plant sale. And, uh, then we're gonna mark out the fall garage sale. We're not gonna do that again. And this Keep Texas Beautiful, that should say dues because that is our dues, $200 per year.
There, just get there.
Do you have money in Florida?
I'm sorry? Um. Yeah, I think what, let's see. What is the one on here? It's $25, four times.
Yeah, I was doing a question at the other day. What, we don't spend any money.
Well, yeah, because the sign is already paid for. We keep using the same sign.
Yeah.
Uh, and if we bought another, we're gonna have to go under signs. But the only thing that I have bought that has anything to do with yard of the month is against certificates that I bought at Staples.
Yeah.
But as far as, we don't, we don't spend $100 or $150 on work. So.
So then does that number need to change?
Yeah, it probably needs to change to like $20 or $25.
Yeah.
Yeah. And see, I thought that should go under, um, well, those repairs in Little Library, which we did have this year. We had to buy that plexiglass. Um, yeah. And I don't, I don't, and the city doesn't like using miscellaneous and I really don't like miscellaneous either. Um, so what we do need to add is. Well, and maybe that's why I have the question mark there. Cleanup projects because that could be the, uh, let's see, how much money was allocated up here? $500. Because I know we voted to have it maintained, um, every few weeks or once a month or something and pay somebody to weed it and, uh, all that stuff, so.
We pay $100 on the order.
Yeah, to do that. So would we call it still cleanup projects?
I think it should be more specific.
Like park cleanup?
Yeah, I mean even more specific because you're, are you talking about the, um, the veterans memorial area? Say veterans memorial cleanup.
Veterans' garden, okay. That's a good idea.
Because then that's not as vague as cleanup projects.
That's all it's being used for.
Yeah, that's right. Those entrances to the park, those two little flower beds and then the garden. But once we get the crepe myrtles, whenever we get the crepe myrtles, uh, those are gonna have to be maintained a little bit too, but hopefully not a whole lot. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yes. Now, and the, the top part up here, this donation, this, uh, money up here, um, I don't know where this $15,000 came from.
I wish.
We didn't get $15,000. We got $10,000. But I don't know where that came from. So I really need to put a question mark about that.
Where is that?
EDC gets $10,000.
Look it up out here.
To help us with the sign. And see down here, they've got. Year-to-date, $10,000 on average income. I don't know where that is talking about either.
You're talking about that cleanup project?
No, I'm talking about the other income now.
A few months ago. I mean, I just, I just saw this. We need to back that to it. Because there's a category on here for beautification.
I just saw that too. I was just gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, the veterans' garden, $100.
Where is that?
In the middle of the page.
Oh, there it is. All alone.
Oh.
Yeah, that one says a thousand.
I didn't see it either.
I.
2024, 23, 24. And then you guys move that to 300, this patch is 24, 25. But it looks like nothing, your date, your zero.
Okay, so it was a thousand dollars.
That was 23, 24.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be correct. And then, and then you changed it to 300. Last year you budgeted for it.
So if this is precious, it's like you haven't needed it.
Yeah.
The only thing we. You haven't paid Billy anything?
Yeah, we paid, we paid Billy, uh, but it was very small, like 37 mil. And I think I'll probably pay him.
Petty cash.
Petty cash money rather than write a check because I don't have.
Probably not since zero.
Yeah. It's hard for us to get checks for some reason. If somebody please give us checks.
Why do we only get three checks in it?
Yeah, that's not married.
Yeah, yeah. We'll have to ask because we, we, if I start getting those crepe myrtles and getting Billy to come and pick our cactus down there and dig holes and put mulch and fertilizer and all that stuff, it's gonna, we're gonna be spending a little money there.
Yeah.
And, um. Well.
Because Billy's trying to. Pretty hard to ask people.
True.
Yes, right. Oh, I saw Steve's lab this week. I've been over there. I saw him there on Facebook. Uh, he does have the same ones that he had back in the early summer. Um, but I don't know that he has all different colors. I know in the pictures it showed the red and white. Uh, one of the colors.
Don't you think it's fall planning? I mean, shipments start coming in. Well, he'll get them. It's fall is just a couple of times and playing.
Well. But he, they're $39 is what they were in the, in the beginning of summer. When I first started looking up there, $39. So I was saying $40 and we were gonna buy eight of them. Four on each side of the drives. And that would've been, you know.
But we have $300 to go. We bought those before, cost them the first, our budget rolled over.
Yes.
So, and that's for the veteran, no, that's for, okay, so should that be? Yes, I know that, but is it considered part of the cleanup project or the veterans' garden?
Why not?
Or, because.
Yeah.
I mean, because we've got the, the beautification for the veterans' garden. And then we've got cleanup projects and we thought veterans' garden. Where do the crepe myrtles go then?
Say this, uh, instead of this cleanup projects, because we don't.
Yeah, we've got the cleanup is covered right above there.
By what?
By the beautification of the veterans' garden.
Yeah, that's what I was saying because we've got it in two different places.
We don't need cleanup projects.
Yeah, I think we should just combine it and maybe up here say something like, um, instead of beautification veterans' garden, beautification veterans and park or park and city park, veterans' garden and city park. That's just a good way, good way of, definitely that's fine. We don't have to throw this at that.
Um, so the beautification one is a specific department. Specific department. I don't think that's a lot. It has to be separate. It's a department type.
So we, we have to call it two different things. Gotcha.
We just probably like that. And then the top section, so if you look at your bill, you'll notice you got the total, total, and a total.
Yeah.
Okay, so she says this is your income.
Yes.
This is the subdepartment and this is your expenses.
Uh-huh.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yes, I didn't know that. And I certainly didn't know this was its own separate entity up here, this beautification. I didn't. I mean, I see it has a different number. It has an 08 and the rest of these down at the bottom say 11.
That's what got my attention too, is it had different numbers.
Uh-huh.
So the top is gonna be your income. The middle's gonna be its own and then the bottom is your expenses.
The middle has to stand as well.
Okay, so that needs to go back down to, where would we put that, Shannon? The crepe myrtles?
Under cleanup?
Because that's gonna be specifically for the veterans' thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I would assume the rest of it would go under your cleanup. So I would assume the rest of it would go under your cleanup project.
And what are we, what are we doing with all of them, or are we basically just feeding all these plants?
Well, and I don't know who come up with these, and maybe it was Kathy, because, you know, she was the first person that did this, that maybe she named all these accounts like this, I don't know, I mean, I.
But now that.
And Harry did. Right.
You might be able to add a maintenance.
I wouldn't make more.
Yes.
Is that something that Billy would do, or?
Yeah.
So what is cleanup projects supposed to be, if not maintenance?
We've already spent two hundred and twenty dollars doing whatever it is it is.
Whatever it is.
Whatever it is. We've already done it. Okay, so.
All this money, you can't even manage all this garden.
I don't know.
Where did we spend it?
Thanks, oh yeah, because you pay Billy cash.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I did, yeah.
So then you're saying there are no, no checks that's clear, I don't know, that's why.
No.
Trying to get an answer.
Oh, okay, well, we'll, I'll discuss this with Mary, I just, I just got.
I'm asking her if I'm gonna make a line under your, absolutely.
A maintenance.
Okay, so you can add a maintenance line, she'll take a number, like she'll do the number part of it, just do maintenance. So, like you can do maintenance for plants, or just maintenance by itself, and then how much you wanna put in there, okay?
So what did we decide about that miscellaneous that followed? Why don't we just change that from miscellaneous to maintenance?
Your miscellaneous is everything.
But you might not have anticipated, we call this contingency.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we need to lose the miscellaneous.
But, I mean, they've left you as miscellaneous.
You know, the six years I worked here, the most confusing thing in my life was the city.
I think people can still say that.
Anybody looks forward to that time of year.
Yeah, we're not, I'll make one line, and I'm gonna get with Mary, she needs this tomorrow, so I'm gonna get with her tomorrow, hope she's gonna be here.
She'll go in there and delete a dollar amount, you know, get in there. She's in class, she's in class yesterday and tomorrow, she's gonna, she'll be back on Monday.
Oh, boy. She told me I needed it to give it to y'all, to them tomorrow.
Yes, but I can spend it for her.
I'm sure glad somebody understands.
I know, right?
I'm like, I'm just writing stuff down, I don't know.
Just tell me what you're writing, work.
Just tell me what you're writing.
Not good with budgets at all.
I just can't.
Yeah.
So.
You can ask Gregory to verify that.
No, Greg would do the same for me. I don't know.
And Steve will give them, well, but not for wholesale price, but we won't. Okay. Okay, uh, number twelve, discuss nominating Sue Ellen as treasurer and Lorraine and Stephanie as special events coordinators. I think since you are already on the bank account, that you should be the person to be the treasurer, we already have Kim as your secretary.
Do I have to understand the budget to be the treasurer?
But of course, that's part of your job.
Right.
We have a second on that.
Second.
Oh.
Please don't make.
The job nobody wants, just second.
Way to go, Sue.
All in favor of Sue Ellen for treasurer?
Aye.
Yay.
Nope. None of us.
Voted.
You abstained, didn't you? Okay, what about, uh, Lorraine and Stephanie as our special events coordinators? And you know what that's gonna mean? That's gonna mean free tree giveaways.
Yep.
Okay, where's the guns?
I don't know exactly. Okay, so what, what is this job going to entail?
Okay, what it's going to entail is that when we do the, um, most improved property, which Shannon was talking about, uh, the community improvement award, you would be looking for those businesses or homes that fit that category, and you would have to order the plaques from Greenville Trophy, and they should be in our budget here under signs, I think, signs and miscellaneous.
Yeah.
Signs and banners, really, is what they are. Uh, but anyway, that's what we do, and, um, get a nice five-by-seven plaque with their name on it, that has, you know, what their award is, and, um, coordinate a time to go to that business like we did down here to the dominant shop, those kinds of things.
Do you understand that?
And coordinating tree regen, and that.
I can do it.
Cause you've already been there, you've already been there and done that.
Well, I make a motion.
And you too, Stephanie.
I make a motion that Sue Ellen, I mean, yeah, you're already in there.
Yeah, she's in there.
Ray and, uh, Stephanie become the specially events coordinators.
Boy. I second.
Okay.
Can we make up our own special?
All in favor of these two being our special events coordinators.
Aye.
Yes, and it's unanimous, thank y'all, thank y'all for volunteering, getting voluntold.
Yeah, voluntold.
Number thirteen is discuss the plant, fall plant pumpkin sale on October fourth and select the location. Cannot do that date, it's my date, because we're having the gospel festival at the city park that day, at the third part. So, I don't know how I came up with October fourth, uh, for that day.
I had requested it because, um, I had.
See, I have it here. Plant, plant, uh, and pumpkin sale, but I didn't have this calendar with me when we were doing the gospel fest, which has been done many months ago. So, but the gospel fest is that day, so, and that's gonna be at the city park. Uh, not gonna be too late.
What's that?
J and J, I think they're gonna keep the jump on us again, like they always do.
Of course.
Okay, so.
So if we change it the other direction, we're gonna be back in September.
Well, we can't, it's too early, yeah, it's too hard. Yeah, I guess, probably gonna have to do the eighteen, cause otherwise it's too late. What's wrong with the eleven? You said you had something to do.
Nice try, Sue Ellen.
Okay, so I was supposed to be hosting a supper club at my house, Ramsey's friends from high school.
Mm-hmm.
I could possibly be cut, I was just asked to do it in the early part of October, so I could possibly do it on the fourth, and then we could do the plant sale on the eleventh. It's, it's flexible, I just.
And then we have our, uh, Indian Nucks thing on the eighteenth.
Mm-hmm.
But let's just say the eleventh, and I'll figure out what I'm doing.
Okay.
Okay, where is that? I lost it.
Everybody agree to that, we're gonna change that date, since we have conflict and things, and we're gonna change it to the eleventh.
And what's the timeframe on that?
It's usually like everything else, it's usually like eight o'clock till one or two, um, no later.
And so you can always leave and go help Rambo.
Yeah, by noon, they're just about stocked, yeah.
Okay, so speaking of the fall plant and pumpkin sale, where are we getting these, this year?
We're gonna have to call that a wholesale place.
Okay, do you have a, do you have a place in mine?
Yeah, there's two places on Highway sixty-six and, uh, Wild Ball and Dryland, well.
Okay.
Between Wild Ball.
We're back.
So it's October four, October eleventh.
Yeah.
I'll ask, I'll ask Chris because he, yeah, I will, I will ask Chris.
So how soon do we need to? I don't know anything about getting stuff wholesale, so, I mean, especially plants, how soon do we need to do something with that? I don't. Yeah. The pretty gourds.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, cause they're expensive, um.
From turks.
So what's the, um, the cost difference in getting stuff wholesale? Again, I don't know anything about getting stuff wholesale, compared to getting it like turks like we did last year.
When you buy wholesale, it's a whole bunch of difference. Really, really cheap.
I mean, we make like three dollars a month before, and you probably make, you know, ten or eleven dollars.
Yeah, so then you don't have to charge as much for them, and then, yeah.
Flats, you know, flats, of course, everything has gone up, but I'm sure you can still buy flats, and then we can sell either the flat or we can sell individual plants out of the flats.
Gotcha.
So. Yeah, they do.
I think the key thing in, in all of this is doing it soon.
I think you are absolutely right.
We can't wait like we've done in the past, cause by then.
That's why we were trying to do it the first of the month, you know, first of the season, when everybody's excited and, or they've already bought their pumpkins and everything, but.
Then why can't we do it the last weekend of, oh, of September?
I know, I haven't stopped at J and J's, I read the sign, it's gotta be here, but I'm sure.
October twenty-nine, I mean.
October twenty-nine, cause when they're gonna be back.
They're gonna be back, so he'll be, he'll be bringing in stuff like that, and stuff, he'll have his gourds and maybe some pumpkins, I don't know, but.
Y'all notice the weather's kinda.
Yeah.
Turning nicer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, so where do we want to have it? Cause I have on here too, the select the location. Um, so do we want to try to go for the chamber parking lot, like we talked about before? That way we would get people coming down maze and get people coming across two seventy-six, because if we have it in front of Rustic Oaks again, that misses the maze lane traffic. And I'll go back to the main course, chamber, okay, I will discuss it with them and see. We're not a member, but the city, I believe, is a member of the chamber.
I see one, but I think so.
I think they are. Okay, I'll check again, uh, nobody there tomorrow, but I'll check. On that date. Um, now we're gonna talk about item fourteen, uh, which is discuss and approve an annual fee of three hundred dollars for a greater vision church for use of a corner of their property in front of the city walk-up side.
This is the one they wanted to call there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you're on speaker, so they should be able to hear you.
Okay, hey, uh, so Shannon and I were talking about this earlier, about, y'all were talking about maybe doing, every year for a lease, I guess, eight, like roughly three hundred dollars a year. My concern is a couple of things, one, it's a little hard to deal with if there's gonna be a future owner, or, or what you would necessarily do if, you know, happen to keep West to walk and be beautiful, and, or they couldn't, y'all couldn't continue to pay the lease, I mean, you just don't know what's gonna happen necessarily in ten years or fifteen. Um, what would be significantly easier is if they would let you basically purchase an easement property, same, same basic square footage. Uh, we could pay, and y'all, but y'all would have to be willing to do something to the extent of paying like, you know, a larger sum upfront, buy an easement, and then let it revert to the property owner in the event that the city no longer wish a sign on that property. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think it does.
Yeah, so like in twenty years, if I'm, you know, it's all the parts we choose to remove it, then you're not gonna continue to pay that, it can revert back to it.
Right, but it would let the city, or you, and do any repairs or things like that, we were also talking about the issue of like insuring it, if it was the city, if it belonged to the city, the city's easement, city's property, we have a lot easier time with the insurance company as well, so that was one of the other reasons, I think that would be easier, but now, you know, one of those issues was, can, can we do an upfront payment, will they let us? But like I said, it, we would design it in a way that it would revert back to the original, you know, tied, tied to the land, revert back to the property owner, city could only use it for a sign.
Okay. Well, I talked to the pastor of that church this morning, and, uh, he, he was very pleased with three hundred a year as a lease, but I don't know that we have the funds, because we still have one more sign to pay for. We just don't have the funds to pay a lump sum for several years, uh.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know how that would work for us, we just don't have that in our budget.
And would it cause the church to have to hire an attorney to get their end of it approved, to sell the portion of land or lease or whatever we're talking about? Um, would they have to get an attorney to get that approved? They may not wanna do that.
I don't know, I mean, I, so I think we were.
I'm sorry, Lee, you cut out on us.
She gone.
Uh-uh, I think so.
Um, I can say that I'd suggest rather that if they have the authority to sign a lease, or the pastor has the authority to sign a lease, likely they have the same kind of authority. A lot of times, you know, the leadership boards in churches, the deacon, just need to approve it, but I, I don't know. We would likely just present them with an offer, or contract, or whatever, however we wanna approach it, and that they would take that to their meeting and approve it or not. I don't think that it would require them to have counsel per se.
Yeah, that's how we, that's how we got to this point in the first place, they had a, we asked for permission to use their property, and they had their board meeting, and they gave us that permission through a vote of the church.
Yeah, the church body as a whole, the elders and the pastor, but what we were concerned about too, Lee, was if, uh, the church property sold, and the church went away, or it changed hands and became a different church, uh, how would that work? I mean, we would, we would definitely need some type of contract and have the wording so that.
So it gets grandfathered in?
Yeah, get grandfathered in if it got sold to someone else.
And I'd like to talk about the three hundred dollars, I just threw that number out there, I don't know that that's a good number, the more I think about it, I think it's a little high, but I'm just, I, I want y'all to consider that.
Well, that's one of the things that I, you know, I, I don't, I was told three hundred enough, I had no idea, would get a lump sum, that's what you agreed on and everything, but, uh, a, a couple thoughts is, we sold or decided, I mean, it could have been, I could think grew, and they wanted to build a different building somewhere else, something like that, and then they just sold the existing structure. Then the next property owner may have some incentive to try to, uh, make it harder for us to access the leasehold property and things like that, so that they can just go ahead and wipe it out, which is the other reason why I thought perhaps that an easement and a purchase agreement would be a little bit better. Uh, the lease would be, you know, we can structure it to be as long as we could conceive. Uh, the lease would be, you know, we can structure it to be as long as we could conceive of, we may make it forever. So that, that's the other issue that I would say now. I, my thought had really been to basically, and I, but I was spitballing, so I did not know what you guys would actually really approach them with, but it, I was thinking as a. Thirty year, you could say what the equivalent of ten years were, ten years would be at three hun, you know, for your pops, so three thousand. But, but you don't necess, that was just me going, maybe that would work if the church would take that instead.
I see. What was your question, Karen?
So they wanna know if it's possible to make per, uh, payments on the purchase of an easement? To at least, at least own.
If they were willing to, if you wanted to do like fifteen hundred the first year, fifteen seconds, that's not an issue from our end. But you really wouldn't wanna, and the city'd have to approve it obviously, but you wouldn't wanna get into trouble on that, say you paid the first half and not the second, cause then they'd be. I mean, you create a, they would, you, you don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
Because for this kinda thing, I don't love, I don't love the idea of doing a walk of lease like that. It is, it just could create issues. It's not like you're leasing a building, saying a tiny por- portion of land, and you just don't totally know what could happen in the future.
Yes. Well, we only reached out to private property owners because SRA shut us down on the place that we really wanted for the sign. So they didn't let us go there and, uh, so now we're, uh, at this crossroads of what to do. Because the church has agreed to one amount, but I'm sure that. I think we could pay it out, I don't know. We still have enough money to pay for our new sign. Well, I think we're gonna have to talk about this and maybe we'll have to talk again with the pastor of the church. Excuse me, and, uh, see what they, um, would agree to, cause I, I honestly do not know. But, um, I sure thank you for your input on this, cause we really were undecided what to do about it, but.
Understand, yeah.
Yeah, we just thought it'd be easier to be on private land and it seems like it's still turning out to be, uh.
I think it's, I think you're right, I think it is gonna be easier to be on private land, it's just getting the right one and then approaching it from the jump. Like, you know, like make sure you know what you exactly, what you wanna do, what you wanna approach them with. Uh, you know, the amount, the other thing is, and this may be a little bit more complex, adding some kind of layer of complexity, but even if, even if you were to lease it. Though it's not my favorite, uh, let's say, is you do wanna have some kinda way to give a decent property description. I mean, uh, it doesn't have to be perfect, obviously a survey would be the best, but I, those surveys are, surveyors are expensive to come out there, do, you know, what's, like, what do we think, a hundred square feet or something? Uh, not, not really that useful, but you need to be able to set, have, give some sort of, how to say, this is the area that we're, that we've got.
A measurement from the edge of the road to the driveway or.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can actually pinpoint your kind or whatever you're using.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can figure that out.
Yeah, and, um, I can tell you that you have to be at least forty foot from center.
Forty feet.
At least, now, I also know that in our small li, small little city, up and down this highway, some of the text bodies meant it's sixty foot. Some of it is forty, some of it is fifty, it is always from center. I know right here is forty foot from center of the highway in each direction. Down there it might be a little different, um, it takes a little while to figure it out, but I can try.
What about that end?
I don't know. It takes a while to figure it out.
Well, we're, we read out a, uh, property owner option on that end now.
We're not gonna talk about that. But yes.
I can try to figure out if the easement's the same there or not, so.
Okay.
Well, I was just gonna say the only thing available down there, I guess, a little track of land that belongs to Text Dot.
That's true.
Is a little postage stamp.
Okay, well, thank you, Lee, for coming online and talking with us, and we appreciate your input again, and we'll be, we'll be visiting again soon. Thanks again.
Okay.
Bye, thank you.
Hold that sign. Whose idea was that sign?
You know, I was just sitting here thinking, God bless his soul, Calvin Travis was one of the finest people I've ever met in my life, but he started this.
But he didn't know what a hassle it was to him.
By golly, we're gonna finish it.
Probably back then, he could've, he could've talked Text Dot into it.
Oh, yeah.
I feel like, you know, but we didn't have the money back then, we didn't have money, so we couldn't, couldn't make moves. Okay, um. We need to, well, I guess Wayne, you wanna talk about, uh, the other part, end of the, that's not on there, is it?
I've already talked about it.
No, no, you didn't tell these ladies about your visit this morning.
I'm not going to tell my, these ladies about my visit this morning.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm on television and the place I visited this morning, they'd be watching.
Okay.
So I, I'll, I'll take the seal from there.
All right.
But it's like an extra barrier of security out there.
Yes.
You already purchased this one.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the second one never comes to fruition, we'll talk later, but the first one.
I agree.
And the first one, we need to talk about.
Yes.
Cause it's sitting right out there, we just saw it about two hours ago when we came through Emery. So, yeah, we've gotta get that on the ground.
Contact the pastor.
Yes.
And we'll see what they say.
Yes, he was in Tyler today, he didn't say if he was headed back today or not, but yes, I will talk to him again. All right, uh, but we did approach someone, uh, at the other end and, uh, we are not gonna be able to put it where we thought, but there is a little pie shaped. Property down there belongs to Text Dot that Wayne has been communicating with some Text Dot people about, and we'll know more about that later. So we need to set a date on number fifteen for our downtown highway cleanup. So we wanna try to wait for some cooler weather.
Yeah.
Definitely. So, I'll be all thing. And also Shannon.
When did we do it last year? The following? I mean, cause those weekends are gonna start filling up, cause once October hits, something, every weekend it seems like.
Yes, that's very true. Yeah, and Shannon and I talked about that, we don't have it on the books yet. Uh, we don't have it.
We were looking at what, September thirteenth? And then in November, you've got a couple of dates in November.
For the.
We clean up at the freshwater tree.
Yes.
September's pretty quick, if it's gonna go on the bottom of the water.
We have two more to do.
We do four.
Yeah, we do four.
Two in the first half and two in the second half, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, y'all have days, y'all have.
Did we do the, for the thirteenth of September?
Yes.
Okay, what y'all thought about that?
Uh, where, is that on here somewhere?
Uh, yes, uh. If we draw the downtown highway.
I'll just put it down at the bottom.
Yeah, cause we need to get it on there so that it can be on the water bill. I don't see it on here, how can I miss it?
Item on here, we can't just throw it out there.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you can.
Can't just say? One total?
So, we're talking about.
Your September reading would be, um, put it on October fourth, right?
Well. We, it's gonna do one, we're gonna split it, do it in October then, split it September and November.
Yeah, I got, I wrote it down for when we get the future, it's not, it's some kinda.
Andy. Say that again, Kim.
But they have to get it, they have to have time to get it in the water bill before, before we can actually do it. Cause you have to vote on it, which you can do right now. Yeah. It's still on your agenda, so we would, we would get it on the deal, it would have to be on, for November, for November.
Like early November?
And we'll stack up your item fifteen on the fall of downtown highway cleanup, uh, cause we gotta do one more of those too, and, um. And everyone, I think we should have it. I know.
Okay, September twentieth is the cotton patch by phrase challenge.
Definitely not be around that.
They're gonna, we're gonna check in, hope the, uh, stock, we're gonna be stopped for that, and we'll, we'll be. Who gives us a thirteen?
Seventeenth, uh, twenty-seventh, you said, or seventeenth?
The twentieth is the cotton patch. So. But leaves a thirteen.
Didn't we do, we did clean up on that day last year when they were, not that date, cause, yeah. No, no, when we did, not clean up, uh, trash pickup, we were out picking up trash.
We were highway, we were on the highway, way into it.
Cheering them on.
That's right, so we have the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh. In September, the sixth.
Wayne, you wanna do it on your birthday?
I don't care.
When's his birthday?
The twenty-seventh, September. And we can do it on your birthday?
The thirteenth.
It's early.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what more could you want on your birthday?
I know.
Let's vote on that date, ladies and gentlemen.
This is one of those.
Here's a suggestion, to set it for the thirteenth, and if we have a rain out, which, I mean, yeah, then it could be to the twenty-seventh.
So.
Is that your motion then?
You're, wait, what'd you say?
Okay, I make a motion.
Thirteen.
Select September thirteenth as our next highway cleanup date with a rain out date of September twenty-seventh.
I'll second.
Dwight, Wayne's birthday.
Dwight, Wayne.
I don't, she calls, she calls Dwight, Dwayne.
And then Dwayne seconded, all, all in favor of having that thirteenth, and if it rains, then it'll be the twenty-seventh. And bring Dwayne a German chocolate cake.
I'll make it.
Do you have a German chocolate cake?
I love, that's my favorite.
So we're gonna put that down, let it in the highway, and y'all know how that works, uh, Stephanie, you may not. Uh, do you have a golf cart? Okay.
You can get a ride with me.
What we normally do is bring our golf carts down and our two miles starts at right in front of the Dollar General, there's a sign there that says. Now that we've adopted the highway for the next two miles and it goes all the way to the glinting lights, just a little past the glinting light, actually. But we don't ever go past the glinting lights, just even up there in two acres. So, um, but we pick up the trash along the road and the ditch, um, we get all kinds of things, tires and plywood and you name it, we find it. We had a half a dollar deal last time.
We don't go deep in the ditch.
No, we don't go deep, we don't go into water, we don't go into highway, and hopefully the Text Dot people won't mow. And when they mow and they mow over styrofoam and you've got all these little pieces of styrofoam, but anyway, so that's how that works. And then we have health bags and, and they come, uh, Text Dot comes and picks it up.
Will be the old parts on top?
Yes.
Excuse me.
That was, so, yes. But we weren't speeding anywhere. Okay, so. We want to discuss our free tree giveaway of July twenty-sixth and how we can free up on it. Oh, my goodness.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
So, and this comes from talking to other people that are on these committees in other cities. My suggestion would be find out how many trees you're gonna get, have a lot of people to sign up for those trees, pick your trees up and then notify them when you want to come to pick them up. And that way you don't have lines of people trying to get trees that may not get them, those people already know they're gonna get them. Okay, so, they.
It was our first time.
To have that many.
Two hundred and thirty-four trees.
Oh, I was gonna come, and I called Andy, Rick says, oh, we caught almost no trees left in cars as far as you can see, and I was like, never mind.
Never mind. Yeah, and we had to.
Might help with the chaos.
Oh, it was chaos.
They might tell us we're gonna get forty of this tree and forty of this tree and forty, so if you're, if you're suggesting that they say, well, I want a magnolia, okay, we'll put you in the magnolia column. We may not, it may not work out that when the time is picked up, we get exactly, cause it's free and they're giving them just.
Well, what my suggestion is, and we gave two trees this time, we're not gonna do that again, we're only gonna give one tree away per household. My suggestion is to do it at the park and let them come in the park entrance and have a circle, let them go around, they can see the trees or whatever. And then let one car stop, get a tree, let the next car stop, get a tree.
Okay, and I think we should.
Go and drive through.
I think, I think we should give them a time, you have five minutes to get what tree you want and then get back in your damn car, because. That, I mean, it was, people were like holding on to their trees and other people were coming, it was. It was chaos.
I mean, my gosh, it was a gift, they used to have a tree and.
And people get real hateful.
Crazy. They need to be in line, line to park.
Yes, absolutely.
Go around, you could tree, and go up, that would be an ideal situation.
Yes.
They had to, um, you can't be here before this time.
Yeah.
For their two hours.
Oh, they were.
We had no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if we, if we'd had five hundred trees, we'd give all of them away.
We were just trying to do something nice.
Yeah. I don't think people, as.
I love those bushes.
Well, and I think most people were very appreciative, people thanked us, and thanked us, and thanked us.
I mean, some of them even helped us unload trees.
They helped us unload and set up.
Some of those people didn't even get one, really bad.
I think, hey, where did you get a lawn to go buy them? Would the city clubs have to pay for us, and then the lawns would appear, that way nobody could get in or, and then you'd be like, okay.
Well, they would have.
They would have to store them there.
They would enter off of two seventy-six into the main entrance.
If there is any empty, I believe access in and out at least.
Yeah.
We could have people at the gates.
But we would have to give you data, have.
Nope.
I mean, they could walk one gate, no, no doubt, but if someone is there, they cannot walk them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The side one gate.
I'll just put my green camera down there, I'll see what's going on.
I'm watching you.
Well, we can always pull our RV down there.
How long ago was that, that we did those trees?
It was on July twenty-sixth.
Here you have a guy call her today.
Yes, today. He has not planted his trees yet, he has two trees.
He hasn't planted his trees yet.
But he hasn't planted.
He wanted to call by somebody, talk to the, what we got them, see how you plant them.
Oh, my lord. Here's an idea.
But anyway.
I'll bet you. Make sure it doesn't get too much water, because.
Yeah. Oh, definitely, that can be definitely approved.
Absolutely.
Yes.
What's that?
I think it's a great success.
It was.
I think it's a great thing, we did, I just think it needs to work, make it better, and.
Yeah.
And I do like that idea.
And we might want to restrict it back to our West Walkeney people, because a lot of West Walkeney people did not get a tree, but people from Dallas.
And Pachy, and the Lottie, and yes, and I have the list that has their, where they live, you know, and they came from all over the place.
And, uh, so maybe this next time, which I imagine will be the spring, um, because they told us we could get more trees, but I'm sorry, we don't have enough time right now to deal with another tree.
No, we do not.
Tree giveaway.
I'm still in shell shock from the last one, I'm not ready.
Yeah, so we're not, we'll just wait till the spring, and we'll improve the plot by making a line, and just giving one tree out, and possibly just our West Walkeney.
We've not, we've not get great miracles from that much.
No.
No, no.
We've got some beautiful magnolias, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you did have great miracles, because I was.
No, we didn't.
I think.
I would have loved to have had some.
Yeah, that would have been awesome.
Save enough money to rent an eighteen wheeler to go get them.
That would be.
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
Well, we took three trucks and three trailers, and we take back the three trucks and three trailers, we loaded BG Hill.
Well, we spent money out of our pocket, like three hundred dollars for three.
I bet we could wrap, or we could just hire them, or somebody, you know, with a long flat bed to go put them up.
Yeah, we're not thinking about that.
And then unload them for us.
We've got, we've got a few months to get that.
All right.
Uh, coming to the spring, uh, at Everdy Farms, but they're great people to deal with. Number seventeen, discussing approved final yard of the month on the south side of the city. I know that y'all took pictures of some, and, um, did Stephanie get to see the pictures?
I sent them, I sent them to the group.
Okay.
Um.
Well, one of the, one of the houses, uh, is Walkeney Grove, it's Carol Welch, uh, she used to be on our committee, and hello, Carol, if you're listening in to us. Uh, the other home, uh, is a new home in Arrowhead, I don't know who lives in that house, and then the other house, um.
Kim's neighbor on Park.
Kim's neighbor, yes, yes.
Yeah, I like that one.
And what Kim said about that property is they're meticulous.
Yes.
That was probably gonna be our.
Okay, so then we'll skip that one.
Which one?
Steve.
Steve.
That would be great.
That would be great, okay.
Yeah, it's real nice.
I think it's on with the grass growth.
Yeah, now that was in Walkeney Grove.
That's true.
So we're down to two, we've got two, if we're gonna leave that one.
Well, I wanted to suggest something too, and, um, don't take any offense to anybody on what I'm fixing to say, but, um, we have a mobile home in one of our parks that we manage, that if you could see the before and after pictures, you would not believe the ha- the house, how it looks. And I've had two people that have won before, one of them has been, or has, has won the yard of the month before from us, and said, we really need to look at that yard for yard of the month, and that's the house over on.
I think I looked at it last, the last, uh, two months ago.
Yes, it's the home of the Tullys, and they have done remarkably good job on the outside and the inside, but it's landscaped so beautifully. And not everybody has a nice home on the water, or, or, you know, type-built type home, they have mobile homes, and, uh, so, but I would like to suggest that somebody go take a look at their yard, um, and I wish I had taken a picture. And where, where is this?
It's on, it's.
Horizon Estate.
It's kinda right behind Dollar General, is that right?
It was right at Walkie RV.
The by, by the.
Okay, yeah.
They live on Star Street, and their address is.
Three oh nine.
Three oh nine.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, um, but, uh, like I said, I'm sorry, I don't have a picture, I'm just not very organized. I apologize.
It's okay.
But anyway, those yards of the month that y'all suggest are all lovely, and, uh, so if you're thinking about that one for the Calvin Travis Yard of the Year, I'll say number seven, then maybe we should select one.
I'm sorry, what now?
Somebody ask any questions? That's what I'm trying to look right for right now.
Which one?
It's in June. The one Mary's.
But we don't have to do it for sure, they can do it actually, it's not under a law. But if y'all, if y'all want to, because it says we need to discuss and approve the final yard, so, uh, if y'all wanna vote on one of the two there, Arrowhead or Walkeney Grove, take a vote.
Are we thinking of that, that one?
Okay, I was just trying to.
The next month, is that what you were saying? That one for next month?
No, next year, next year, we're done this year.
No, no. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we're done, this is our last.
Okay, let me see the pictures of the ones that are up.
Yeah, it's Walkeney and Arrowhead.
It's gonna be two, because we're gonna leave Steve's for, um. I'm sorry?
Uh, no, we have not.
So who, you don't know who, um, the.
No, I don't know. It's a fairly new house, it hasn't been built very long.
I like the long wood shutters.
That's my vote as well.
Okay, Dwayne, are we taking a vote? Uh, somebody wanna nominate?
The wood shutters, you talking about this one?
Nope.
Yep.
Yeah, Arrowhead. Carol Welch.
No, it's not Arrowhead.
I mean, that, Walkeney Grove.
Okay.
Okay, are you making a nomination then?
I thought somebody already did.
I nominated.
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, we have Bruce by the Ray, that's it by the way. All in favor of the house in Walkeney Grove?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, and I'll get in touch with her and let her know. Okay, item eighteen, is discuss sponsoring a contest for a city flag voted on by citizens and a prize for the winner. Um, I think we touched base on this a little bit last time, we didn't come up with anything other than, I thought it was a good idea to have a city flag.
Yeah.
Um, they fly American flag and Texas flag, they were flying POW flag out front, but I'm not sure if that's what they're still flying. But I know Quinlan has a flag because it's down there in the parking lot of Easy Mall, um, so.
Is it something we talked about having an art student to, uh?
Or have like, what, a contest?
Yeah, a contest, yeah.
Yeah, but who, who's gonna participate, who's gonna be the artist? Anybody?
Anybody.
Grown up. Yeah.
Grown up. Kids. Yeah, they have to.
You know, that's a great idea, because sometimes we get these things and then figure out, oh, you get permission.
I would get permission personally. No, I think Jane has a plan if she could, um, go and.
Okay, uh, their next reading is, um, no. It's what, on the what day?
So I know that yard of the month is supposed to be in August, but since we did Debbie have a little bit late.
Yeah.
We're kinda, maybe in a couple weeks, isn't it?
Yes, I already told her. Good thing, yes, right, that she was gonna have the sign for a while. Okay. Um, yeah, we'll approach city council about that, see what their ideas are on that as well. And then we've already discussed number nineteen, uh, changing the date for the Calvin Travis Yard of the Year, just number seven, and Kim has the, yeah, and she knows who she wants to give it to, so that's a good thing. Um, number twenty, discuss little free libraries, Ellen, do you have any reporting there?
I, I've not checked the library this week, I checked it last week, and it actually, uh, from when I stocked it before, hardly any books had been taken, so I guess with back to school, everybody feel busy, you know, I'm getting books, I haven't looked at it this week. Um, I know the Ray still has some children's books.
I got a bunch.
I did put all the adult, and my next door neighbor gave me books.
I have two big bins of those too.
Adult books? Okay, so, just stock them, but.
That's good.
Yeah.
And it's still holding up well, the door and everything?
Yeah.
Good, that's good. Okay, twenty-one, Dwayne, your social media update?
Well, as y'all well know, we got hammered with the tree giveaway. And then since that time, there's not any activity hardly at all on our, on our page, because we're not doing anything.
Okay.
People react to things that we do.
I know.
We're not doing, they're not not reacting, so.
People start reacting when you put the plant everywhere.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
That'll get back going again.
So it's just, it's, it's the nature of the beast, you know?
Yeah, it is.
Things are happening, it's happening on the.
Well, I try to put something out there, not every day, but every couple of days, I try to put something out there, uh, of interest, that I think ought to be of interest to people, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, y'all can sign as far as I know.
I try to like and share everything, you know?
So, anyway, discuss future agenda items, I know for a fact, we gotta come up with these, uh, dates for the cleanup, uh, out of the wastewater treatment plant, and I want to approach a lady at our church about making us some new shirts.
That would be awesome.
She made them for, um, several people up at church, and they're beautiful shirts, and so I'm gonna approach her and see what she would charge us to make the shirts.
Okay, and I have one item to add.
Okay, no, go ahead, I'm open for everybody to do.
Yeah, 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 well, this, I just remembered this from a previous meeting, I would like for us to somehow put into our budget to have actual yard signs made for the winners of the lighting contest.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Oh, yeah, we were talking about that the other day.
I don't have any idea how much that, those things cost, but, I mean, it'd be nice if it was, well, okay, so my old neighborhood, um, they, we had a lighting contest every year, and, uh, they would, you know, say the president's award, or, you know, the grand winner, something like that. And they weren't real big, they just had a little, uh, ribbon and then rewarding, but, um, I would like to see if we can figure out how to add it into our budget to buy those.
Are you talking about the sign in season?
No, no, just, just for, you know, we, so we usually do it about the middle of December, is that right? So we would award it then, and then take them up back to the first of the year.
Yeah.
And just keep them until the next December. No, it, it would be like our yard of the month, we get it back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I know that Robbie, uh, is laid up right now, but Jim did a beautiful job on that tree sign, the free tree giveaway.
Yeah, he did the magnets on my car too.
Robbie is laid up?
Robbie's, uh, he has surgery.
Yeah, he has foot surgery.
Oh, yeah.
He's done all of our signs, yeah.
Yeah, and they did our food court sign, they did a great, great job on that.
Yeah, they're great, great artists for that.
So, okay.
So we could probably approach them, uh, how big was the sign, are you thinking?
Well, I mean, they can maybe just tell us, give us prices, and then we can figure out what fits our budget, you know, I, I wouldn't, not anything bigger than the yard of the month sign, but I'm thinking even something, something.
The priciest part of that is that.
That, no, so I would rather not have a metal sign, I'd rather have one of those slip and grab.
The eight signs?
If you're probably looking at what, five dollars versus eighty, eighty dollars.
Yeah, that's what's expensive. But he may have a suggestion for some other, I can have some other kind of sign that we can, um, rather than most ones.
Would you like for me to, uh, investigate that, or does somebody else have a connection?
I mean, he knows all, I mean, I've been in there the reason.
Uh-huh. Been in there several times.
Okay, well.
Yeah, you can take on that.
I, I can have it, and then for our next meeting, present what I find.
So we want to have one for all the different categories, right, because we have, I forgot now what they were.
Yes.
Then we went back and did.
We did three, but then, then we realized in Hales Retreat, those that were so amazing over there.
Yes, I gave one that said it was the chairman's, something like that.
I think we need to, I think we need to vote on our next, and how many are to give out, and.
Yes.
So basically, we just did first place, second place, third place, right?
Yeah.
We called them something.
Yeah, they had some names.
Okay. So is that what we want to limit to, is three signs? Yeah, okay. So we just.
Can't just be handed signs out, we're annoying.
And we have to have a prize.
We gave five awards last time, I mean, we had five. We gave five awards last time, I mean, we had five winners.
Yes.
The last two didn't get any money or anything, so that's all I'm asking, is we wanna stick with three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Signs for Christmas. Okay, what else do we wanna put on the future agenda? Yes. Okay.
Okay, I didn't hear that, something about Halloween?
Halloween. Do we wanna? They do.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And they do that on Halloween?
Yes.
I will not be here. I spend Halloween with my grandchildren.
I'm gonna be in the mall.
Wow.
All right.
Um, in addition to the shirts, uh, we are really lacking, uh, pins, any kind of promotional thing to give out to people. Uh, and we also talked one time before about business cards, getting business cards.
Uh-huh.
And I tried to get that from Jane, because Jane made them the last time, but she said she let her kids bring this clown to the computer and, or she didn't have it, so. Um. I don't have anything like that, but I could do that, I don't have any kind of printer or anything to do that with. But I think it's a good idea to have business cards, and we have some promotional items, we had pins and we had the little.
Where did you get the pins?
I ordered them from, uh. Ring Bull, trophies. And then we had the boat keys, then we had key. Those are always a good one. Jane, Jane got those, and, uh.
Seeds.
And we had plenty of seeds, a lot of seeds, and what else?
Yeah, there's lots of promotional places on, even on Amazon, I mean, there's just tons.
Yeah, there's tons of things, tons of things.
Tons.
But it just depends on, you know, what we want to, and we don't have anything in here for, like, advertising. And I think that would be what we would need, it's all advertising. Uh, our office supplies, we didn't spend any money, we allocated two hundred dollars, we didn't spend any. Like, maybe if you go in your office supplies. So, anyway, that's something we could be thinking about for next time, too.
Pins went over well at ten minutes.
Yes.
Writing pins or pin pins?
No.
Writing pins, everybody loves a pin.
Yeah.
Yep.
And mine that I've had for quite a while finally ran out of ink. And I was searching and searching on my desk trying to find another pen that I could take the insert, the refill out of it, put it in my pen, I loved it.
I know, and you have a good pen.
Especially when you have a stylus on the end.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Okay, all right, anything else we need to add on here for next time?
I make a motion, we enjoyed, so Tammy can go home.
Yeah.
I second. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy, and we're a term, and thank you for listening publicly here.
I'm gonna turn this off.